Good morning. We are at the nine o'clock hour, so I will call the Harnett County Board of Commissioners work session for Tuesday, August 31st, 2021 to order. Welcome all of you that are here to join us this morning. And Ms. Barbara McCoy has agreed to have our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. McCoy?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, our God, we come before you this morning in the same place. Thank you for our life, death, and thank you for our mind, our strength, and our faith. And we thank the God of this house, all commissioners here that are here to represent Harnett County. Lord, we ask that you look on all of us, give us guidance in how we represent this county. Lord, we ask that you continue to bless those that are out there fighting for our freedom. And we thank that you cover us with your grace, with this mouth of yours, no matter what.
Thank you, Commissioner McCoy. At this time, we're going to move to the downstairs training room to meet jointly with the Harnett County Board of Education, and then we will move back to this room to conclude our meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner McCoy. At this time, we're going to move to the downstairs training room to meet jointly with the Harnett County Board of Education, and then we will move back to this room to conclude our meeting.
School board joint session meeting with the county commissioners, August 31st, to order at this time.
Thank you, Chairman Jaggers, and we called our meeting to order upstairs since we didn't notice the change in meeting rooms. We had to start up there, but we're good now, so I think we're at discussion of the proposed exchange of property.
No, we've got to do the Pledge of Allegiance. We need to do that.
Okay, y'all do. Go ahead.
Ms. Bennett, would you lead us in the invocation, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, blessed be thy name. May we, dear Lord, we are for all of your blessings. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for all that you have done for us and what you continue to do for us. Heavenly Father, we ask and pray that you will be with us this morning to guide us to make the right decisions for this county through the commissioners and the Board of Education. And in Jesus' name we pray, dear Lord. Thank you, Jesus.
Mr. Powell, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so proposed exchange of property between the county of Harnett and Harnett County Schools and the town of Lillington. And Mr. Snow, Mr. Buliker, y'all have it. Mr. Haney? Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, I'll go over it with everybody this morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
So this, hopefully today, we are nearing the end of a very lengthy process and discussion between the county, the school system, and the town of Lillington. I know you're all familiar with the framework of this property swap, but what I want to present to you today is an actual contract and agreement for the exchange of real property that will begin the process of finalizing this property exchange. Everybody should have in front of you a copy of the document, which I will go over. The copy that was sent out to the Board of Commissioners in the agenda packet, there are a few minor changes which I'll go over as we run through the document, but I believe the Board of Education, this will be new to y'all, so you'll get it as it currently exists. And as I move forward with this, Dr. Fleming and Dwight, if y'all have any comments to add to what I'm saying or correct, please feel free to do so. Again, the contract is between the county, the town of Lillington, and the Harnett County Board of Education. The intent or the purpose of this is that the county, the town of Lillington, and the Board of Education are title owners to these properties. The town is currently implementing a downtown revitalization plan, which will include the procurement of certain downtown block real property tracts and a recreational expansion plan that will include the procurement of the Starr Academy Gymnasium and Ballfields from the Board of Education. The Board of Education has plans to relocate its administrative offices and other school system support facilities through the procurement of the former county public library building and an office building at 108 East Front Street from the town of Lillington. And then the county desires to obtain additional warehouse storage space and a possible future location for a school bus garage through the procurement of property from the town of Lillington. If you turn over to the second page, I'll go over the obligations of each entity, and I will pull up on GIS to show you each property as we're talking about it. So the first, we're going to talk about the county's obligations. The county will convey the former Harnett County Public Library facility at 601 East Main Street, Lillington, to the Harnett County Board of Education. You can see that pulled up on the screen. Prior to this conveyance, the property will be surveyed. The town of Lillington has engaged a surveyor, and those properties are currently in the process of going through the surveys. However, the intent of this agreement will be that when all three entities approve it, anything that doesn't require a survey can move forward, and then when a survey is completed, anything that requires a survey will also move forward. There's also an acknowledgement that an entrance and parking lot portion of this property is subject to a public library use reversionary clause to the W.A. Johnson family and heirs set forth in that deed. Any conveyance by the county to the Board of Education shall be subject to that reversionary provision and special warranty deed, and that it is the responsibility of the Board of Education to deal with this title encumbrance. And Charlie is aware of this and is working on that matter as we speak. Also, as part of this conveyance, since we are waiting on a survey, the county has already approved a short-term lease that, once approved by the Board of Education, would allow the school system to go ahead and begin leasing that property to begin the work that needs to be done in that facility. If you look at item B on the following page, it's funding for the former library facility renovations. This would be funding to renovate this, the former library, to convert it to its purpose for the school system. I know that we have had some preliminary discussions regarding the funding to be used for this. We're currently still having those discussions with Dr. Fleming, and we've got a meeting tomorrow to discuss more on that issue. Additionally, the county will lease portions of the 125 Alexander Drive warehouse property to the town of Lillington and Board of Education. This is the property that the, I can show you this on the map. This is a property behind the county's former administration building that is currently owned by the town of Lillington, and once the county takes possession, it's split into thirds. So the top third will be leased to the town of Lillington for a period of a year, and then the bottom two-thirds will be leased to the Harnett County Board of Education for a lease period of one-year increments until such a time as a maintenance facility is constructed by the county that will allow for the transfer of what's being stored there. Additionally, there is county funding for a Board of Education auxiliary services facility, and that building is planned to go own property currently owned by the Board of Education at 1500 South Main Street in Lillington. And that is subject to the county's capital improvement plan and budgeting process, and funding is to be provided within five to seven years of this agreement. Additionally, the county agrees to provide funding for a Board of Education bus garage facility, and the proposed site for this is land currently owned by the town of Lillington on East McNeil Street that will come to the county in this property exchange, and that, again, funding within five to seven years of the agreement date. Those are the county obligations. Any questions about those items?
What's the relationship to property number 21, front of the library?
Oh, that is not owned by the county and is not part of this agreement.
Are there any easements or any other legal ramifications for that?
No, not that we're aware of. That property was rented from the current owner as part of the library for additional storage, but that's not part of this. The county has vacated that lease agreement. Okay. Next, we'll move on to the town of Lillington obligations. We'll go to page four. Again, the town of Lillington will convey the warehouse space at 125 Alexander Drive to the county, and again, the county will enter into lease agreements with both the town of Lillington and Harnett County Schools for storage of that space for a certain amount of time. Additionally, as I mentioned, the town of Lillington will convey the property at East McNeil Street to the county with the intention of this becoming the site of a future school bus garage. If you look on the map, the town of Lillington does have a portion of this property for a lay-down yard and shooting range. This map is not up to date, so there is more clearing than shows here. And the town is currently surveying that site with the intention of holding back approximately 6.5 acres of that site for those purposes. That said, should the town of Lillington cease to use either of those pieces for that current purpose, they will come over to the county as well. In addition to that, I know that the, there's currently a, to the south of this site, a, an economic development site that was recently certified by the Duke Site Readiness Program. There is a desire, as part of this agreement, potentially to extend the current right-of-way easement on the McNeil Street property to connect to that piece. So we have added language, this is newer since the original was sent out to the Board of Commissioners, that in the future, if the town or the county should instigate and plan an economic development project, which includes the real property contiguous to the southern boundary of the McNeil Street property tract, the county shall be willing to consider the conveyance of an access and utilities easement extending from McNeil Street through the tract to the southern boundary. And any survey work related to that would be the responsibility of the town of Lillington, and must be approved by both parties. Going to page five, the final item is the conveyance of the former Harnett County Development Services building at 108 East Front Street in Lillington. It is owned by the town of Lillington as part of their government complex, but this property would be conveyed along with the surrounding parking to Harnett County Board of Education for their use. And that is being surveyed in order to separate, identify the boundaries between the building that will be retained by the town and what will convert over to the Board of Education. Any questions about the town of Lillington's obligations at this point? Okay. Moving on to the Harnett County Board of Education's obligations. We'll move back up. A lot of these properties are very close together, so, okay. And first, the Board of Education shall convey the real property tracts located in the downtown block of Lillington that contain Board of Education offices for finance, auxiliary services, custodial, and IT warehouse, and the red barn. Those PIN numbers are attached in the agreement. And that conveyance and lease shall be completed within 20 days from the date the last party executes this agreement. There is no survey work needed for that property. And in addition to that, there is a small, very small tract at the corner adjacent from that property that will also convey. Next is the conveyance of the downtown bus garage facility property to the town of Lillington. This property will convey from Harnett County Schools to the town upon the completion of a new school bus garage, and not before that. So again, we're looking at, you know, five to seven years as funding is provided for that new facility. And then finally, the conveyance of the gymnasium, print shop, and ballfield properties at Starr Academy from Harnett County Board of Education to the town of Lillington. These include the building currently housing the print shop, the ballfields, the gymnasium, and I believe there is a modular professional development hut that has recently been constructed behind the administrative offices. That, as well as being surveyed to split that property. And then the town of Lillington will enter into a lease with the school system for the IT building, or I'm sorry, the print shop and the professional development hut until such a time as those services are relocated. Any questions about those obligations? Okay, that is the extent of this agreement. The intent would be to present to both of you today, both boards today, and then to have both boards approve this version of the agreement along with the town of Lillington. Are there any questions about anything related to this agreement?
When, do you know when the town of Lillington's going to vote on this?
I think their board meeting is the second week in September, but I'll confirm that. All right. There are no questions? I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Haney.
Yeah, that'd be great. I would make a motion that we accept the contract and agreement presented to us this morning.
I'll say.
Question for a second. Any further discussion on it? Hearing no nay votes, motion carried. Thank you.
Let's see, and we will, we meet on seventh, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we'll take, we'll address this on the seventh, since we got to take votes and receptions. Okay. Anything else on this matter from any of the commissioners? Okay. Yeah, well, actually, we're going to recess and move back to the upstairs, so then y'all can close. At this time, I'll call recess where the commissioners move back to the boardroom, and we'll reconvene there. Thank you, everybody, for your time this morning.
And I'll entertain a motion.
So who? The recess?
No. The close.
I have motion. Motion to close.
I have a question.
Owned property currently owned by the Board of Education at 1500 South Main Street in Lowington. And that is subject to the county's capital improvement plan and budgeting process and funding is to be provided within five to seven years of this agreement. Additionally, the county agrees to provide funding for a Board of Education bus garage facility. And the proposed site for this is land currently owned by the town of Lowington on East McNeil Street that will come to the county in this property exchange. And that, again, funding within five to seven years of the agreement date. Those are the county obligations. Any questions about those items?
What's your relationship to property number 21 from the library?
Oh, that is not owned by the county and is not part of this agreement.
Are there any easements or any other legal ramifications for that?
No, not that we're aware of. That property was rented from the current owner as part of the library for additional storage, but that's not part of this. The county has vacated that lease agreement.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to the town of Lowington obligations. We'll go to page four. Again, the town of Lowington will convey the warehouse space at 125 Alexander Drive to the county. And again, the county will enter into lease agreements with both the town of Lowington and Harnett County Schools for storage of that space for a certain amount of time. Additionally, as I mentioned, the town of Lowington will convey the property at East McNeil Street to the county with the intention of this becoming the site of a future school bus garage. If you look on the map of the town of Lowington, does have a portion of this property for a lay down yard and shooting range. This map is not up to date, so there is more clearing than shows here. And the town is currently surveying that site with the intention of holding back approximately 6.5 acres of that site for those purposes. That said, should the town of Lowington cease to use either of those pieces for that current purpose, they will come over to the county as well. In addition to that, I know that the, there's currently a, to the south of this site, a, an economic development site that was recently certified by the Duke Site Readiness Program. There is a desire as part of this agreement potentially to extend the current right of way easement on the McNeil Street property to connect to that, that piece. So we have added language, this is newer since the original was sent out to the Board of Commissioners, that in the future, if the town or the county should instigate and plan an economic development project which includes the real property contiguous to the southern boundary of, of the McNeil Street property tract, the county shall be willing to consider the conveyance of an access and utilities easement extending from McNeil Street through the tract to the southern boundary. And any survey work related to that would be responsible, the responsibility of the town of Lowington. And must be approved by both parties. Going to page five, the final item is the conveyance of the former Harnett County Development Services building at 108, 108 East Front Street in Lowington. It is owned by the town of Lowington as part of their government complex, but this property would be conveyed along with the surrounding parking to Harnett County Board of Education for their use. And that is being surveyed in order to separate, identify the boundaries between the, the building that will be retained by the town and what will convert over to the Board of Education. Any questions about the town of Lowington's obligations at this point? Okay. Moving on to the Harnett County Board of Education's obligations. We'll move back up. A lot of these properties are very close together, so. Okay. And first, the Board of Education shall convey the real property tracts located in the downtown block of Lowington that contain Board of Education offices for finance, auxiliary services, custodial, and IT warehouse, and the red barn. Those PIN numbers are attached in the agreement. And that conveyance and lease shall be completed within 20 days from the date the last party executes this agreement. There is no survey work needed for that property. And in addition to that, there is a small, very small tract at the corner adjacent from that property that will also convey. Next is the conveyance of the downtown bus garage facility property to the town of Lowington. This property will convey from Harnett County Schools to the town upon the completion of a new school bus garage, and not before that. So again, we're looking at, you know, five to seven years as funding is provided for that new facility. And then finally, the conveyance of the gymnasium, print shop, and ball field properties at Star Academy from Harnett County Board of Education to the town of Lowington. These include the building currently housing the print shop, the ball fields, the gymnasium, and I believe there is a modular professional development hut that has recently been constructed behind the administrative offices. That, as well as being surveyed to split that property. And then the town of Lowington will enter into a lease with the school system for the, the IT building, or I'm sorry, the print shop and the professional development hut until such a time as those services are relocated. Any questions about those obligations? Okay. That is the extent of this agreement. The intent would be to present to, to both of you today, to both boards today, and then to have both boards approve this version of the agreement as, along with the town of Lowington. Are there any questions about anything related to this agreement? Any?
When, when, do you know when the town of Lowington's going to vote on this?
I think their board meeting is the second week in September, but I'll confirm that. All right. There are no questions? I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tane.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I would make a motion that the, we accept the contract and agreement presented to us this morning.
I'll say.
Question for a second. Any further discussion on it? Hearing, chairman votes aye.
Godfrey aye.
Aye.
Ben, aye.
Hearing no nay votes, motion carried. Thank you.
Let's see, and we will, we meet on seventh, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we'll, we'll take, we'll address this on the seventh, since we got, we've taken votes and votes sessions. Okay. Anything else on this matter from any of the commissioners? Okay. Yeah, well, actually, we're going to recess and move back to, but upstairs, so then y'all can close. At this time, I'll call recess where the commissioners move back to the, to the boardroom and we'll reconvene there. Thank you, everybody, for your time this morning.
And I'll entertain a motion.
So who? The recess?
No. Okay. The close.
I have motion. Motion to close.
I have a motion.
Of a classified announcement. That will not be as extensive as this, but it will want you to take a look at it and see it before we post it. Once you have said yes, that looks like what we're looking for, adjust it to accommodate, to make it that, we will post that. And once that posting happens, we're on the clock. You'll have that within a few days. The recruitment profile is a kind of a marketing tool, and it'll probably be five or six pages. It'll have some graphics in it. It will be more extensive, and it will have most of this information in it. But what I think is important for you to know is that after talking with all five of you, there was a heck of a lot of consistency with what we were hearing. And almost, and I don't think that anything that we heard that was conflicting with anything else. Each of you had your own thoughts about it, and each of you offered something that the others didn't. But none of that, all of that information can live patently within one human being, and it gives us a texture of, a sense of the texture of the type of characteristics that you're looking for. Mission, you're looking for a mission-focused leader who is proactive, a futuristic thinker with the following attributes and competencies, who can assist the commission and to develop cohesive program. And that, and some of the things that were expressed by almost all of you, if not all of you, were an interest in somebody with, candidates with significant experience in local government, with particular emphasis in county government, and other large multifaceted organizations providing services similar to the services provided by Harnett County. Financial experience, budget development experience, fiscal control of county at the governmental level is desired. Improve, in terms of an issue, experience in the provision of, an improvement of regional water and sewer utilities, as they're associated with long-term capital planning and economic development interests that you've each expressed to us. Human resources experience, which includes employee development, motivation, making sure, bringing in employees, a sense of value and importance, motivating them to, in terms of leadership qualities, and to perform at their highest level. Demonstrate a commitment to diversity, inclusion, and provision of a supportive environment where all employees feel valued and appreciated and thrive. Growth management experience is critical, including significant short- and long-term capital infrastructure planning. Just read it. Is highly desired to support a growing community with appropriate housing, retail shopping, recreational, educational, and workforce opportunities. Developing a community that is not going to simply be a commuter, community, but rather a community that has the economic resources and the jobs that allow people to live and work here. The track record in economic development, and again, these are kind of interrelated, experience in areas such as recruitment, development of industry, airport, jet port development, pertinent retail and associated food and beverage services, quality entertainment venues, utilities such as natural gas and broadband communication, to broaden the tax base and provide local employment opportunities and services, and again, to encourage and make possible the kind of economic development that you've each described you're looking for. Intergovernmental relations, interlocal governments, agreements, including state, federal, local schools, county, city, as they relate to legislative and service provisions and other concerns. Leader who has demonstrated the ability to coordinate and cooperate with officials at various levels of government, and be in a collaborative way rather than a competition way. Ability to listen to employees, community leaders, pertinent groups, to address their concerns and explain various policies, be able to explain various policies, procedures, and provide opportunities for suggestions and encourage them to move forward. The issue expressed by many of you was, got a great staff, good programs functioning well, but that you're in a growing community and things are changing, and you've got to stay on top of that change. So proactive approach to, to planning strategically, a strategic thinker, somebody who can look beyond what's happening now into the future, and with your help decide, help you decide where you want to go, and then help make the staff capable of making that happen for you. So a proactive leader with some vision. Ability to show empathy as well as stand up for various constituents, with ensuring adherence to county rules, regulations, policies, and standards. It was also expresses a significant interest. Track record in proactive governmental officials and strategic leaders, a strategic leader who understands the role of manager as an appointee of a county commission, and can demonstrate the appropriate leadership skills to motivate staff to initiate and accomplish cohesive body of programs, projects, and services to address identified community needs and move the community forward. Interrelated with a lot of what we're talking about, but it kind of captures that thought in a little bit different way. Person who has a track record of demonstrating excellent customer service to citizens, community, and interested parties. Person who understands the appropriate levels of communication provided by county commission and the community, and serves as one of the faces of the council along with the president, or the chairman of the board, other board members, and you have a PIO also that shares in that role. Is well-rounded proactive leader with the experience in community relations and willing to, experiencing community relations and is willing to participate in community civic organizations and be part, come part of the community. Person who is accessible, available, and who's visible in the community, and you've got various parts of the community, it's a large county, and that person needs to understand that the job of managing the city is, or the county is, mostly takes place in this building, but you want them to be part of the community and visible. Those are the things that we talked about, that with each of you. There may be some others, but my plan is to get in before you in the next few days a document that for you to look at, and it will be an announcement. And whether you need to approve it as a group or not is up to you, but I would envision you providing each of you a copy of it and having you comment about it. And as long as we're consistent, you're consistent as you have been, most likely we'll not necessarily result in a formal approval, but rather some adjustment undoubtedly be necessary, and then we're off and running. And following that, I'll have the formal profile to you. Questions?
Any questions or comments from Mr. Slaven? Well, I'd just like to say that I do appreciate the opportunity you afforded each of us to be able to have that conversation with you and Barbara. As looking at the list, I can, I can see that you were paying close attention, at least in my discussions, quite a few of the things that we talked about, I see you are encapsulated here. Since you've shared with us that we all seem to be pretty much on the same page, I suspect everybody feels the same way. So thank you for that, and we look forward to getting the next, I guess, more, more formal and official thing to look at and move from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If there is something that's not in here that any one of you would like to see in here, let George know and get it to me quickly, and we'll modify it.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, folks, very much. It's a pleasure driving in this morning from gorgeous weather. Once I got into the county, to Harnett County, I had to just be amazed at the beauty of the county. We're really happy about this.
We did, we did have a pretty sunrise this morning.
Well, it was just as the agricultural, I don't think, I don't think I've seen tobacco growing in a long time, but the beautiful, beautiful greenery and the blue skies, lovely neighborhoods, it was beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next we have a presentation by Rose and Associates, Southeast Incorporated Consultants for our Economic Development Strategic Plan. Ms. Rose?
Good morning, Commissioner. Ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
If you don't mind, I'm going to take this off while I speak, lest I faint at the beginning. As you know, we have been working on an economic development strategic plan for several months, and we are now at the, almost near the end with our final presentation of our report. But actually, this is really just the beginning, right? The goal of this was to create a strategy for the community and how to move forward. So the premise of this economic development strategic plan was based off of the 2015 Comprehensive Growth Plan. So the goal was to not only update the plan, but then to take the economic development portion of this and expand it beyond what was provided in the comprehensive plan, and provide more detailed strategy with how to move forward with an economic development department. That included updating some of the demographic and economic data from 2015. It included having an economic development summit, which we did in June, creating a strategic plan, and then having some detailed goals and strategies and tasks for implementation. So with that, obviously, we started with where are we 10,000 feet, took a look at all the assets, its relation to all of the other things going on in both the regions, most notably, you know, the RTP and the Fort Bragg Military Base, everything that's going on between Fayetteville and Raleigh. Harnett County is strategically located in between them and has several assets from a transportation standpoint, including the newly expanded and refocused jet port. So one of the things we did was to update that data. So as you all know, we had 2020 data estimates. Since then, the census has dropped some of their information. Not all of it is, it's still filtering through, the way that the Census Bureau, they kind of give things to you in bits and pieces, but basically, this kind of shows us the exponential growth that you all have experienced, which you all know firsthand, no need to remind you. But it's all moving in a positive direction. So you've got positive growth, housing units, as we know, income, educational standards. Education is important in terms of workforce development and those sorts of things. So all that data, again, is in the report. So in the strategic plan and during the vision process during our summit, we really focused of all of the elements of the comp plan. We really honed in on land use, transportation, economic development, natural resources, we'll obviously talk about, as well as utilities. Those are all decisions you all will have to make in terms of your expansion of sewer and water and how you'll handle those things. So as you know, we had Vision Harnett on June 8th, it was very well attended. And what we talked about there was not only kind of providing some data and information, but also to really ask a few questions. Are we moving in the right direction? What should the priorities in the community be in terms of land use, transportation, and economic development? And then from all of that, we had folks break into groups and had a visioning session, which was quite animated and interesting. And from all the words and ideas and thoughts that flowed through that conversation, we pulled out the key words and came up together with a review with staff, and some of you all may have been involved, to come up with a really vision statement as well as a mission statement. The vision is aspirational. What is it that we've achieved, when we've achieved it? What does it look like when we proverbially get there? And then the mission statement is what do we need to do to get there? What drives that? So that is, that's been shared. Harnett County is a strongly rooted community where its heritage is respected, its natural environment is protected, and where people and business thrive. So the mission is Harnett County will provide a well-planned infrastructure, a trained workforce, high quality of life, and ample natural resources to support economic growth. So when we talked about land use, again, this is from the 2015 plan, there were different scenarios that were discussed in terms of business as usual, which is, you know, also known as sprawl. The strong towns concept, which focuses around core centers of communities. Natural asset scenario, which is protect everything and no development anywhere. And then the preferred scenario, which was some combination of really all these three things. And what we discovered is though you all agreed to that in 2015, the dynamic of what's really happening on the ground is more of that kind of sprawling development. So I think it was about 10,000 or 12,000 single-family residential units being proposed in various places throughout the county, and that's of course challenging you all in the discussion of utilities. So it might make some sense to go back to what was our vision, what was our plan, where should we preserve, where should we expand utilities, and where should we not, in support of the more natural and agricultural environment. When it comes to transportation and commuting, you all know what your experience is in terms of trying to get around and get to and from various places. So we took a look at the commuting and transportation arena and what's happening there. And obviously, you've got a lot of road infrastructure and CIP projects happening. And that is all going to influence how people move around in the community, but it is also important from an economic development standpoint. In terms of goods and services moving, folks need to be able to get to and from with goods and services, as well as commuters trying to travel to and from various clusters of employment concentration. So obviously, that the 540 expansion in the southeast that's outside of your community will heavily influence what happens here. Your highways 401 and 421, where you've got corridor studies and expansion plans in discussion, as well as Highway 87, and then the 55 expansion. So we talk about that in the report and its influence from an economic development standpoint. So when we get to economic development, the really the four pillars of economic development are attraction and product development, that's bringing in new companies and entities from outside, business retention and expansion, that's grow from within, grow and expand the companies that you already do have, which is a very important element. Usually, these top two-tier lines are what most economic development organizations focus on. The bottom two are usually the ones that usually fall to other organizations, such as chambers of commerce and tourism and development authorities, visitors and conventions bureaus, and that's small business entrepreneurship and tourism. But we'll talk about each one of those in a minute. Attraction is the one that you all historically have really put your predominant focus on. So our approach in the strategic plan was to take a more balanced approach and collaborate with others to be able to focus on that. So what drives your economy? I think the other thing that we discovered was that your economy is largely driven by educational services. That's your university and Campbell University and this Central Carolina Community College, both which are tremendous assets and create a lot of economic impact in this community. And it's, the importance of them should not be understated. You also have manufacturing and industrial, which again, has been the focus in your industrial parks and business centers. But again, we're suggesting maybe a shift to take a look at what can we build off of from the educational services standpoint? What are the programs and degrees and things happening, both at the community college and the university, that we can build off of from an economic development standpoint? Your highest employment, however, is retail trade and accommodations and food services. That's largely driven by what's happening out at I-95. So in economic development, again, this is from the 2015 plan. You had four goals stated in that, and I underlined some of the key words here. Attraction and marketing, existing industry, building a better product, and building organizational capacity. Again, it focused on those top two pillars and did not include anything regarding tourism and small business and entrepreneurship. So that would, not that that should be a focus, but it would help round out the strategy. And that all speaks to really lifestyle, because we talk about this quality of life, and what we're finding is the way to attract companies to a community is to have a high quality of life where the employees and talent can be attracted to those locations. So in the attraction and expansion sense, you have had some successes, we talked about this. You, you actually have had quite a few new companies and jobs come into the area, and the Godwin Group has done a fairly sizable expansion. And you also included economic development guidelines. So again, the product development is a big focal point here, and you've got three parks that are areas that have been worked on in terms of product development, and that is moving forward. A lot of the work has been around just the initial plating the sites, making sure the utilities are getting there, et cetera, et cetera. What we're suggesting is that now needs to shift to more of a marketing focus. On the small business and entrepreneurship side, this is Harnett County's number of small business establishments and the establishment size. And though a lot of folks think about, again, a focus on attracting the big fish, so to speak, you're really made up of a lot of little fish. Companies that are anywhere from two to nine or 10 to 99 employees. So those big, large deals come few and far between, and so it would make sense to help grow and sustain the companies that are here, and it would attract other small companies to come here and grow where they have an opportunity. Tourism and the outdoor economy was the other area we talked about, and this could tie nicely to your rural environment, your farms, and your agriculture. It can be in many forms, agritourism, heritage tourism, ecotourism. In North Carolina, this is what the national economy creates, is obviously arts, entertainment, recreation, accommodation, and food services, folks that want to come and enjoy Rock Raven Park and the river. And all of those things really help support those industries, but they also help support retail trade and, believe it or not, manufacturing. I cited an example, and North Carolina ranks pretty high in all those areas in outdoor recreation. I was just in Asheville last week at a ULI conference, speaking at one of the conferences, at one of the sessions, and we talked a lot about this tourism and outdoor economy and how they have built their economy based on that, and how successful it's been, and some of the challenges they've had. You know, they're so popular now, they're challenged with affordable housing, the service workers can't afford to live there. But they're also attracting huge manufacturing. Pratt-Witten Aircraft just dropped a million-square-foot facility just outside, and the question is why? And the answer was because of the outdoor recreation economy and the lifestyle and the highly educated folks that, you know, they want to attract the workers and the next generation that want to live in places where they can be outdoors. And of course, COVID has certainly made us all aware and appreciate our outdoor environment. So in the agricultural history, again, that's really important, you talked about it, it's in your, now in your new vision statement. And agritourism is, is an area that you could certainly grow to learn about. There is an agruhood in Durham. I did visit one in Asheville called Olivette, which was quite interesting. And it surrounds, and it sits on the French Broad River, so it's looked very familiar. I kept thinking when I was there about, gee, we have to share this with Harnett County. They had a beautiful, you know, farm, acreage that was a subdivision that was busted, basically, in the last recession, and they built a farm environment around it where it sat on the banks of the river. So that was quite interesting, and I grabbed a brochure and I will share it with Coley. So if you get a chance to visit one of these, it might make some sense, because that might be the type of development you want to attract, because the farm is a working farm, and it becomes an educational opportunity, it becomes a destination. School kids can go learn about all these things, and it created a neat, a neat opportunity and environment. And in fact, that's a picture of it in the lower right-hand corner. They have a community pavilion where folks come together to do things and learn about that. So when we talk about product, real estate demand is based upon employment growth. Economic-based analysis assumes that when you bring a manufacturer, it creates a job, and it brings other jobs, and that increases the population, increases the income, increases the demand. But when it translates into real estate, what then starts to happen is you have industrial and office in the employment sector, and then the population in retail and housing in the lower area. And what that does is it's, they flow behind each other. So when there's a, when there's growth in production and in the form of industrial and office uses, there's usually growth in terms of housing and retail. You're seeing growth in housing and retail largely because the production is happening outside of the county in many instances, and it's influencing you all. So that's the, the goal of trying to kind of balance those efforts out in terms of production and lifestyle. So that's why when we talk about targeted areas, we talk about them in terms of those things. Your plan had a lot of conversation, or a lot of areas that were defined as mixed use, mixed use, mixed use. Well, what does that mean, and what should they be focused on? And this is how we talk about it. So we'll, we'll describe that in a minute. Highlights. What we also found is that you have tremendous opportunity. You are very competitive in terms of vacancy, in terms of pricing, in terms of availability, but there is limited availability, and you could add additional product into the market in pretty much every single category, industrial office, retail, and multifamily, because there are some, certainly some opportunities there. And we talked about demand in terms of trade areas. What's interesting is that this is from kind of Maine and Maine at the center of Lillington, where we are, the county seat. And when you start to think about population growth and what's happening, your trade areas don't follow boundaries. Consumers, employees, and markets don't follow geographic boundaries for the most part, except when it comes to paying their taxes. But for the most part, people live and work based upon how long will it take me to get there? And that hearkens back to your transportation discussion. So that's why it's important to keep those commute times viable. Your average commute time in the area is about 30 minutes in Harnett County, so that 30-minute population, that 30-minute population really is your primary, is your primary target. We talked about retail and leakage and what happens. Leakage is really something, nothing more than the demand outpaces the supply, and people are buying these goods and services elsewhere, outside of the county, or outside of that 15 and 30 and 45-minute drive time. So you've got some opportunities to build off of what's happening out there at Rooms to Go, and expand and do more furniture and home furnishings. You're already attracting lots of people there for that outlet center, so that's an opportunity. You might look to the IKEA Center in Concord, Charlotte area, North Carolina, that built a whole furniture and home goods development around it. So there's other supportive retailers that have kind of moved in where IKEA is, and that Rooms to Go is about the same equivalent in terms of size and what it's able to draw to the area. So that's one thought. The other is, you know, clothing accessories, sporting goods, general merchandise stores like who? I did a search. You have Walmarts here, but you don't have Target. That might be one retailer that you might consider trying to attract. Again, a lot of these areas in home, in apparel and clothing, and the areas that had a lot of strength suffered a lot of challenges during the pandemic, online shopping, et cetera. But the general merchandise stores, Kohl's, Target, Walmart, have all fared pretty well, as well as the home goods stores, because everybody's doing a home improvement project. Again, the one that stood out even in a 45-minute is the home furnishing store. So we were also asked to take a look at what does our economic development structure look like? Is there, you know, how should a good economic development organization be structured? And this is from the International Economic Development Council, which confers the C E C D, which is Certified Economic Developer designation. So whoever you hire hopefully will be on track or have that designation. And here's what the economic development organization should look like. They're driven by their customer, and we have to know who the customer is. Operate with a strong strategic plan. Hopefully, that's what this effort will provide. Measure results and adjust accordingly. I've created some key measurements, benchmarks for you to think about to already set that up. Creative risk takers, they understand trends and shifts, they build strong alliances and networks, we'll talk about that in a minute. Earn the trust and respect of their communities, efficient with funding resources, invest in people, et cetera, et cetera. So right now, you have several organizations that do the work, so, so to speak, of economic development of all four of those areas. The Harnett County, which is the council and the Properties Corporation, as well as five chambers, and two tourism development authorities. So what we're suggesting is in terms of a department to manage all of that, that under the county manager's office, there's interdepartmental coordination, and that a, an executive director be hired who's really got the focus and the role of that top-left box of development, product development, attraction, and marketing. Really marketing your economic development organization, understanding how to market your product, taking that, that directive in-house and more aggressively owning and doing a marketing plan and doing that effort. As well as two different assistant directors, one to handle the business retention, expansion, and workforce area, and the and workforce area, and the other to assist with small business entrepreneurship and interface with tourism. And then, of course, administrative support and assistance. And it's really important that all of these, that this organization and this department really interact with and collaborate with all of the other departments, particularly your planning development services, your G I S, your parks and recs, and though, obviously, the water authority. So it would make sense for them all to get together on a regular basis and just so everybody kind of is in the loop and knows what's going on and where the, where the challenges are for each. We talked about the targeted areas. Again, back to the land use plan, the 2015 plan. There's areas that are a little hard to see here, but they're, they're colored in the purple and the brown, and those are a variety of compact mixed use and, I'm even having trouble. Yeah, that's the, something else mixed use, production mixed use. It was, it was kind of a generic mixed-use category. So what we talked about was each of these targeted areas should have a focus and a theme and think about what types of industrial or commercial development should occur there. The one in the center is, is employment mixed use and that is focused on production, but in the areas of the life sciences. And that could include retail, office, and housing, lab space, really working with the university and perhaps an incubator structure similar to what they did. NC State University did the Centennial Campus. You could do something on a much smaller scale, but that, those are along the lines of, of what the thought is there. And that would be in conjunction with that Brightwater Business Park that you already have there and have some spaces available. Up to the north toward Angier, we talked about a lifestyle, a lifestyle because a lot of the folks up in that area and the growth is due to the commuters coming to and from Raleigh and the R T P. So that could focus more on retail, some office and residential. And then along I-95 and Dunn, as well as out toward Fayetteville and Fort Bragg, is to be, again, production-oriented with more industrial-type development and some lifestyle over near the, near the base. Because a lot of folks are coming out of there and necessarily don't want to move away, but want to stay in the region for various reasons. So life sciences would be in the center, around the university, two production areas focused on that industrial and office development and then the lifestyle production up north, which could round out and, and help with some of the residential uses that, other than single-family traditional, like townhomes, condos, apartments, those kinds of things. Because that will help with affordability. You want to get in front of, the unintended consequences of success are usually traffic and affordability. So rather than having people drive till they qualify, you want to try to address in your housing mix, you know, making sure you have that conversation early rather than, early rather than late. So the strategic focus of the plan is really in four primary areas. Marketing, that's the big one, is to have a marketing plan and to do a website review and take ownership of the marketing effort by creating a brochure and an online tour, perhaps videos. Get some testimonials of some of your successful companies that have both relocated and/or expanded in the community. The best way to convince a company to come to a community is for them to talk to another CEO that's already here, why did they come here? And those interviews and testimonials are very powerful and you could benefit from having those. Talent attraction and retention, that's about workforce development, working with the school systems. You've already got a lot of good stuff going on there, expanding that, creating more lifestyle options. Again, other than the traditional single-family home, a lot of folks in, particularly young people, don't want to own, they want to rent. Or they want a smaller lot. Or it's particularly, not only young folks, but folks that are retiring. I don't want the big house and the big yard anymore. I want a small, little lot or a townhome or something that I can manage, but I want to stay in my community. And that's the goal, right, is to have your folks that grow up here, come back here, and be meaningful contributors. Collaboration, that's another area, is between the municipalities, nonprofits, and other organizations, chambers and T D As. Advocacy is a big one. You all need to, together, talk with one voice rather than individual municipalities, et cetera. So how you all can collaborate would be meaningful in terms of some of those conversations. So we moved from the strategies and the tasks into actual implementation. So a lot of this is very small. I won't get into all the details, but there's three pages of taking each of those four areas and what are specific goals and things that could be done, who should be doing it, should this be long-term or short-term, you know, because you can't do everything all at once. So what should you focus on now? As well as some tools and resources that you can use. We've created and included in this an appendix that not only has the data and all the reports for everybody that likes to dig into the data, but also some toolkits from the International Economic Development Council. A toolkit, for example, on business retention and expansion. It's basically a here's how to do it. So all of these things, I always say our strategic plans should not be put in a, on a shelf, but in a binder. And it becomes the first section of your new operations manual. And so all of these tools and toolkits can go in there to help build that operations manual for the future, current and future Economic Development Department. We also included metrics that can start to be measured of how do we know when we're, we've been successful? And that's not just about the jobs, it's about commercial permitting, it's about tax revenue, it's about vacancies and a variety of other things. So we create this bulleted system of metrics that could be put in an Excel spreadsheet, do a baseline year for your first year, and then track it going thereafter so you know if the needle is moving in the right direction. Okay, I dropped a lot of stuff on you, so I will stop talking. And this is meant to be kind of a workshop, thoughts, ideas. I believe you all received the actual full report yesterday or the day before. I'm sure you all are still kind of grinding through and reading it. This doesn't end the conversation, as I said, but if you have any questions, comments?
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Commissioners, any questions?
We didn't get it to four o'clock. Mr. Nickley and Thane, Mr. Johnson, Ms. McCoy.
Well, if you do, I'm happy to come back after you've had a chance to digest all of this information. And if you want to have just an online or in-person working session just to kind of go through things, I'm.
Sounds good. I, I think it will, takes a little while to work through that. But I do appreciate the overview this morning and the hard work that you and your folks have put into looking at our county and where we are and the direction that some, at least some advice on direction. And I do appreciate that. But I, I do, I probably, I would think that we probably would want to take some time, maybe in a few weeks or a month or so, to revisit after we've had a chance to work through this. It was quite a bit of information.
As I said, and you all are moving, it's like jumping on a fast-moving train, right? So you're already moving forward, making decisions. All I can say is you have tremendous opportunity. So hopefully, this plan will help harness all of those opportunities out there for you.
Well, thank you so much. We, we feel like we're at a very important time for the direction of our county as well. And we appreciate the information you've provided for us as we continue to try to make the best decisions for our county and our citizens. Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. You received a PDF, I believe. You can.
We have a hard copy that we.
You can print it out. We can print it out. Yeah, we used to print them out, but a lot of folks just read everything on the screen, so.
I'll make you one.
Any other permission on hard copies? You know I would.
You're my man. You're all good?
Yeah, you can get me one.
I mean, I can print, send a bunch of them to you if you want.
Why don't you do that?
It's up to you.
Okay.
I generally will send it in a, you know, in a binder. Again, the main, the, the one for the department in a binder, but can send you all bound copies.
That'd be great.
If that'll be helpful.
Yep.
I know, I still have to read these.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to a discussion of the facility rental policies. I think there was some discussion about this a few meetings back. And I believe, Mr. Haiti, you were charged with looking at that a little bit further. So.
Yes, I'm bad. Obviously, don't want to waste your time and make this a productive discussion. I provided for you a memo in your packet along with some additional information, which I will go over. The goal, as mentioned in the memo, is to come up with a clear policy that can be applied consistently by staff. So I'd like to get, we'll go through this. I'd like to get your feedback today on the issues that are of importance to you. Come back before the board with actual draft policies based on that feedback. And then, following that, have the board adopt the desired policy. So I think as I'm going through this, I want to reiterate the key questions that were identified that I think really do, at the very least, warrant the board's direction. First, to what organizations do you wish to make each space available, talking about the commons area and the training room? At what times do you want to make either space available, particularly for non-county use? And then, are you comfortable requiring a deposit and fees for certain groups to use these spaces? And if so, which groups should be, charge those fees? And then, how do you wish to resolve issues where there may be a non-county entity that has reserved a space, yet there is a county need for, for that space at that time? And then finally, I didn't include this, but I think, thinking about the staffing needs that go along with whatever direction the board wishes to go in. So again, the memorandum was intended to provide you with an overview of the issues surrounding the operation and use of the commons area and the resource center and library training room. The current policy governing the use of the commons, I'll go over again, I think I've mentioned this before, but I want to make sure we're all clear on what's in there. It was adopted by the board on August 15th, 2011. And that policy stated that the use of the commons area was primarily for county departments, boards and commissions, and staff to use to allow them to conduct their education programs and work with affiliated groups. Basically, those were the groups that got priority for scheduling. And it also allowed for the use of commons, the commons by other responsible, recognized civic business or religious organizations in the community or worthy community activities. The existing policy does not really do a great job of defining those groups, nor does it designate which of those groups should or should not be charged the fees that are included or the, the deposit. The policy states that the commons area is available for meetings daily between 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. and from 6:00 p.m. to midnight Monday through Saturday. So again, that'll be a question for you. Are you comfortable with those hours? Where would you like to go with that? Per the policy, a facilities manager is required to be on duty at all times when the commons room is in use. And the use of the commons area includes the availability of audiovisual equipment and I T. Assistance. I was talking to Vice Chairman Weatherspoon when an issue came up last week regarding that A V. Equipment. There was a, a storm that took down some of what we have in the commons area, but I believe we have the ability to, to connect one microphone and a projector at this point through a laptop. And obviously, based on this discussion, we want to get your feedback to determine how best, how we need to move forward in trying to repair or replace that. Additionally, groups that serve food or catered meals are responsible for removing their trash from the premises and there is no alcohol allowed. Certain users, again, we'll get into this, are required to pay a $250 refundable deposit at the time of application. And the costs which may be deducted from that deposit, basically their costs in the event functions are not concluded in a timely manner, or there's damage to the facility or equipment, or the user does not properly clean the space, requiring county staff to go in and clean behind them. The deposit is held until the facilities manager determines the space has been properly cleaned. Applicable users must also pay a room rental fee of $50 per hour, which is due the day before the event. That rental fee covers the cost of using the commons area and the time of the facilities manager. Additionally, you've seen this in the policy, there is a $182 fee if county staff are requested to set up and take down tables and chairs, but only if that is, work is done by the county. And the policy mentions an I T. Audiovisual fee, however, no amount is provided in the policy. This policy allows the county manager or their designee to deny or cancel any use of the facility that, quote, "they do not believe to be in the county's best interest." And it allows the county to cancel or reschedule events by outside groups if the county requires the use of the commons room area. Users may not charge participants beyond what is necessary to cover their costs and the space is not available for the policy to be used by anyone for personal profit. Private and public dances and other similar social functions are prohibited. To give you an overview of kind of how we got to where we are today, the use of the commons area was restricted during the pandemic and was restored when the board, when you voted in June to reopen county facilities. At that time, management and coordination of that space transitioned from facilities maintenance to parks and recreation. During the transition, staff identified several inconsistencies between the existing policy and ongoing practice. For instance, due to staffing issues, the facilities manager was not always physically in attendance when the space was in use, though they were available on call if needed. As mentioned above, it was also not clear which groups should be required to pay a deposit or fees to use the commons area. Our present understanding, and this may be determined to, there may be some differences in what we, we understand at this point, but our present understanding is that the fees were not charged to civic and nonprofit groups or to political parties for holding their meetings. A deposit and fees were required, to our understanding, for church groups holding events, nonprofit groups that hosted fundraisers and special events, like Lillington Chamber, holding the Chamber Banquet, the Cornelius-Harnett Gala, that kind of thing, and private organizations that use the space. So again, going forward, staff believes it is important to have a policy in place that clearly states the expectations for non-county groups to use the commons area, as well as what they can expect from the county, so that those expectations are clearly understood and the policy can be applied consistently by staff going forward. Similar to the commons area, in February 2021, county staff moved into the new Harnett County Resource Center and Library, which includes a nearly 4,000-square-foot training room on the ground floor. During planning for the new building, it was determined that this type of space was sorely lacking in Harnett County and that this space would benefit both county employees and the public through the provision of training and programming opportunities. Since the space has been in operation, it has primarily been used by county departments within the resource center and library, as well as other county departments for meetings and programming, as well as by other related government entities. So several, in addition to the policy, the current commons policy, several reports have been included in the packet to provide information relevant to this discussion. The first, which you've got behind the policy, is a usage report for both the commons area and the training room. So it shows for each space, it gives you the actual events that were on the calendar last week when this was pulled for both spaces from July through October, so a four-month period. And obviously, we've, we've gone through July, we've just about gone through August, and the other ones for September and October are currently scheduled. The calendar for the commons includes ongoing COVID testing and vaccination efforts by the Health Department, which obviously, as this situation evolves, the need for the space too may evolve. And also, the Harnett County Board of Elections has reserved the commons and training room for meetings to train election workers and to conduct early voting during the upcoming municipal elections, as well as next year's primary and general elections. Currently, county and non-county groups are being coordinated around these needs. The training room is also seeing increased demand from county departments as more meetings are held in person. However, we anticipate additional growth from departmental usage as we move through the pandemic and our departments add additional programming, again, both for the public and for county employees. The next report that you have is a breakdown of the county's costs relative to operation and management of these spaces. The primary cost, again, is for staff time, as you can see, both from facilities maintenance, which is required by the policy to have staff present during non-county usage of the commons, and from the I T. Department, which is required to assist with the setup of audiovisual equipment. Currently, Facilities does not have adequate staffing to effectively staff events at the commons. Again, as I mentioned, that's not always been able to provide the facilities maintenance person in person. And, you know, obviously, opening the training room up to non-county usage would, would further exacerbate that support. Just something to make y'all aware of as you consider where you want to go with this. you want to go with this. The training room, as you witnessed this morning, also has more complex technology. The space can be subdivided three ways, so you could have multiple meetings going on at once, which would require additional coordination with IT to make sure that's working properly. On the cost analysis, you can also see there is a nominal cost for utilities. On that page, you can see, I'll go over that, basically for electricity and water and sewer, we've come up with, based on the percentage of the building that's for the commons, that cost is $1.10 per hour. And then staff involvement, depending on which facilities position you have, the cost per hour could be $26.27 per hour or $27.34 per hour. And then for IT, staff is required to set up the technology and make sure it works properly and then take it down following the event. So we would assume for an average event, about an hour, hours' worth of their time, but that cost is $33.55 per hour for a total of those items of $60.92 per hour. Just so you're aware, the previous, it appears the previous fees related to the commons usage were more to cover the expenses of the county to manage those facilities rather than to bring in additional revenue. However, also, as you, as we mentioned, those fees have not always been charged to everybody. The, to go along with that discussion, facilities maintenance currently has two part-time positions, one that primarily staffs the Harnett County Courthouse and another intended to provide support for events and meetings in this commons area. That, I think, happened, that second one was created about a year, maybe a little bit more, well, actually before the pandemic, so maybe two years ago now. And they had hired somebody to do that, but it was very difficult to kind of keep somebody as a part-time position that was willing to do those. So the current thought would be to try to manage all those events with existing staff, just kind of delegate on-call hours and a rotational schedule. So both of these positions are currently vacant and the department is concerned that it will not be able to find qualified employees to fill these roles if they recruit on a part-time basis. The department has requested to replace the two part-time positions with a single full-time position in order to provide more consistent, consistent support of these functions. And this would require additional funding, however, the cost would partially be offset by the elimination of the two part-time positions. I think I may have mentioned this before, the cost with salary benefits, everything of a facilities maintenance tech is $52,625.17 per year. The remaining part-time salary budget for facilities is $25,107.21. So that would be, to do that, would be an additional cost for this fiscal year or an annual cost of $27,517.96. Obviously, we're already in, almost in September, so that would be less than that. Just wanted to make you aware of that. The third and final report includes information from other jurisdictions related to the fees and deposits they require for public use of their spaces. We had Parks and Recreation contact some local other agencies, Town of Fuquay Varina, Holly Springs, Town of Leonton, City of Fayetteville, City of Dunn, Lee County and Chatham County, and Anzlo County, to get their costs for their facilities and the fees they charge. The purpose of these fees that have been charged for non-county usage of the commons area has been to help support staffing, again, and utility costs related to managing these facilities. And then the purpose of the refundable deposit has been to ensure county policies are followed by outside users and to pay for any damages or additional costs incurred due to improper use of the facility. So you can see on that document, it kind of varies all over the spectrum. There's typically either a, an hourly rate or a deposit required, but that's not, it varies by organization. And then you can see the capacity for those facilities on the right side of the page. Just for some comparison, the capacity of the commons is just over 200 people, I think it's about 202, 205. And the capacity of the training room is around 550 for the entire space with 133 per So with that information, I'm willing to entertain any questions you've got and also any direction from the board related to your preferences as we move forward to attempt to draft a policy.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Haney? Or any comments related to the information he has shared this morning?
Well, I know that there was a point of contention with charging fees, especially for, you know, the space, and I'm glad that you emphasized that it is for staffing and for utilities. So I definitely see where it would be adequate in order to charge something for use of the space. Well, not for the space, but for staffing and utilities. So thanks for clarifying that.
And I know you had, with regard to the two primary spaces, the commons and the training room, you had some questions as far as you listed in there.
Yes, you've got the current policy for the commons and those uses. You know, our question is to which, to what organizations do you wish to make each space available?
Right. And I don't know, as far as me personally, I think I'm probably going to need to go back and think about that a little bit and go back and look at the information you provided a little more detailed format. So I would recommend that, yes, Mr. McCoy?
I just want to make it clear that in the past, ever since the commons area has been built, there were certain organizations that didn't have to pay for the use of that organization. I think we do need time to go back and look at all of this, but I do propose that for the use of that, for the commons area, that we continue to keep that policy. I realize that there is a cost for all of us to use those facilities, for traffic to use the facility as well as for the, it's up to constituents to be used. But I think it's time we want to leave out constituents or something like that. So my suggestion is that we take the information that Brian has given us and we analyze and study the information and try to make the next decision for the community as well as for the school.
Thank you, Commissioner McCoy, I would agree. Why don't we put this on our next work session to give us some time to study and think and I believe would be in a position to have a little bit more informed and educated discussion regarding some of these questions that you have pointed out that we'd really need to answer before we get anything set in place.
Got it. Do we have a list of organizations that I guess would, you know, that the space was made available to before and kind of like if, what they were charged and if not, kind of?
You talking about the commons?
Correct.
I can do my best to get that information in whatever form we've got it.
I'd just like to know what organizations, like, we have exempted in the past for this?
We can get that for you. Would it be helpful if Brian was to go through and kind of make a checklist of categories of organizations and then that might help you in your discussion about it? Because we're really looking at categories, and I agree with you, we need to know what we've done in the past, but the policy is going to be written basically to say if you're this type of organization, you're allowed to use it, if you're in this organization, you're allowed to use it and we won't charge it. And so that might, I was just thinking, that might be helpful for your discussion. Would you like us to?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir, I think that would be beneficial for me.
I would like to, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am, you had a floor.
In the past, we didn't have categories on itself for political organizations and the use of the constituents to use it for certain government's business and all of that. But to go back to streamlined organization, I don't know if that's a discussion we can have, I don't see that it's really necessary for us to do. We just need a policy to cover who pays and organizations that are not, will not pay. And in the past, that has been government or organizations here in this county. And I'm only speaking for this because I know the policy for, just the buildings were built because I've used them for that length of time. I'm not saying what was, what decision she made, but he asked what organization was using the building at no cost to the county. It cost us to use the building. So I think Brian did a great job of analyzing and bringing out to the public exactly the cost that the county has to pay to use that building. I understand that all of us are citizens there and we have to pay for the buildings and all of them. So that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you, Commissioner McCoy. And I do appreciate that, as I think somebody had said earlier, that we, obviously, these facilities have not been used in the past to generate revenue just to cover expenses for groups that are using it. So I do appreciate that because I think that's what we need to, need to provide for our citizens, but I do, I do see questions like, you know, for-profit group use. Some nonprofits have not been made to pay, churches, however, have. So I understand that question about, you know, it's hard for me to designate between those two, where one doesn't pay and one pays. So those sort of things I think would help me, right?
It is, and I think in the rental fee comparisons, the bottom one, Anzlo County, they've got different rates for affiliates and non-affiliates. We, you know, there's obviously room to do whatever you'd like to do, but I want, obviously, it's a complex issue and I want to make sure you've got all the information laid out as clearly as possible.
And I will say that whatever guidelines we decide to go by, I think there needs to be a provision in there that the county manager would have authority to waive if they saw, let's say, this was a, one of the commissioners, as Mr. McCoy said, that wanted to meet with their constituents, or maybe it's somebody who works with the county that wants to do something that's going to be benefiting the county in some way. So there, I think there should be a provision there where county manager could waive fees in certain instances and not to put the county manager, whomever that may be, at a time on the spot, but there are times when that would need to, that decision, somebody would need to be able to make that decision.
You make a good point because as y'all know, we had a request from the bar association because I think we're in a three-county court district and they were being jointly, the three bar associations, to nominate someone for a judgeship. And in that case, I felt like, well, they're doing public business, they're here to conduct public business, and so we went.
Brian, when you're putting together a list of who's used the building in the past?
Yes.
Would it be possible to also see how much usage they've had? In other words, if there may be one or two organizations that are using it on a root, regular basis?
You're talking about frequency, not duration?
Yes, yeah. There may be some organization that uses it once a year, kind of thing.
Correct. And there will be, absolutely.
That would be beneficial to know also.
We will go through the information that we have and do our best to pull out everything that we can.
Sounds good. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Haney this morning? And we'll, let's plan to put that on the next work session, listen, Mr. Wood, and we will, in the meantime, I would ask commissioners to think through and study and have conversations, whatever you need to do to see where, what direction you think we need to go with this. I think it's all of the desire of all of the commissioners that we allow our citizens to be able to have the opportunity to use it as much as possible, but with that being said, I do know that there are expenses involved with maintaining, supervising, cleaning, so, you know, those things we'll have to take into account as well.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to a discussion of county broadband infrastructure, Mr. Wood and Mr. Royer.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I've asked Thomas to come today. We started doing some research, Thomas did the research on this when we were looking at, the first issue was ownership of the assets. And then that got into a secondary issue, which frankly, has taken on even more importance. And I gave y'all a copy of the memo I sent to Kevin Leonard and we've since gotten a reply back. I know y'all have gotten that, but I did want to go over that one more time with you. But before we do that, I'd like to ask Thomas just to go through what his research found so that we're clear about who can own the assets, what we can and can't do. And then the secondary issue that he ended up researching was how can we pay for this? So, Thomas?
Okay, thank you. So just as a backdrop, the North Carolina Constitution vests authority with the General Assembly to essentially make the counties vested with power, same for municipalities. So what that means is whatever the General Assembly grants counties and municipalities the authority to do is what they are authorized to do. And so if it's not vested with the county or municipality, or it's not reasonably related to them exercising those functions, that means county or municipality can't do it and essentially it's reserved for the General Assembly. Okay, so that's just the broad backdrop. And where that's important is because, as it relates to public enterprises, okay? Counties and municipalities have been granted the authority to operate different public enterprises. One which was granted to municipalities and not counties was cable television. Through litigation, that's been determined that includes broadband. And so that's where we hear, we're here today. But noticeably absent from the county's authority is the ability to operate cable television. So you now have municipalities the ability to do it, albeit they have to jump through many hoops. A lot of those hoops have essentially barred them from being able to do this, but counties, it's silent. And so what is our authority as we're trying to expand broadband? And essentially, 153A addressed that under Section 459 and grants counties the authority to issue grants. So monetary grants to private providers of high-speed internet to come and essentially expand their service into unserved and underserved areas within county territorial limits. As part of that, though, it means that any infrastructure that's built out belongs to the ISP that has been given the grant. In this case, we did that with Cloudwise. We went through the whole selection process, I guess it was about October of this past year, and Cloudwise was the winner. We had reached out to many providers of high-speed internet throughout the state and the only local one that responded was Cloudwise. They were ultimately granted, or they won the grant when compared with the other submissions that came from all out of state. And that was essentially the $2 million that was approved by the Board of Commissioners over the last year to expand high-speed internet into unserved and underserved areas in the county. And that's the phase one that we are currently undertaking right now. Now, the one caveat, which is I think where it raised, raised some eyebrows when George read it, was what sort of funds can be used to establish those grants? And the big thing is it has to be unrestricted general funds, essentially means your revenue. And George raised the question, well, how did we do it last year? Essentially, we keep hearing talk about the use of COVID money to expand broadband. That's an easy way to kind of say it, but that's not really how it worked out. Essentially, the COVID relief funds that we received essentially allowed us to use those funds for things that were normally covered under our general revenue fund. In this case, salaries of our first responders and law enforcement officials, which, by federal and, you know, local... which by federal and, uh, you know, local determination, it was they are predominantly being used to fight COVID-19. So, uh, they would let us use the, the Relief Act funds to then cover their salaries. So what normally would be your general fund to cover salaries, we then had leftover and we were able to use, uh, to cover the cost of broadband, uh, the $2 million that was approved by the board. So the issue now comes up, if we're only allowed to use unrestricted general funds, how do we utilize ARPA funds to cover broadband going forward? Uh, and it's, it's nice to see, uh, I'll actually turn it back over to George at this point.
Okay.
Just based on the fact of his conversations with, uh, NCACC and, uh, discussions about, uh, you know, potential efforts and next steps going forward.
Thank you, Thomas. Uh, after, uh, I got his, um, uh, report on that, I mean, his memorandum, um, I immediately went to see he and, um, Chris, and we discussed it in detail because our plan, as y'all know all along, has been we, we could use these ARPA funds and possibly be able to do broadband deployment countywide, uh, because we're getting a substantial amount of ARPA money, plus North Carolina's getting an even bigger amount of ARPA money. And of course, we're waiting to see if their budget includes broadband as a category, uh, that we can then apply for part of their money as well. So we had high hopes that, uh, we would be able to put this thing in pretty quickly, which is why I came to you two weeks ago and asked for authorization to, uh, get with Cloudwise and, uh, have them do a preliminary engineering study so that we would know what would it take to do it, and then financially, how much would that cost? All of that was in preparation for then being able to go to the, um, state of North Carolina with our request, plus in, in terms of you making an allocation of some of our ARPA money for it if that became necessary. So I give you that backdrop. Uh, so obviously, uh, you know, when I read that part about you could only use unrestricted general fund money, uh, it got my attention real quickly. And so, uh, as Thomas said, I wanted to know, well, how did you do the $2 million? And he's explained that to you. That was a, an unusual circumstance. So the more we discussed it, uh, the three of us, uh, we formulated the questions we wanted to ask, and my purpose in going over this today is twofold. One is, is to give you an update from the NCACC because, uh, and the second one is, is to ask you to authorize us to lobby the General Assembly to get this law changed. And obviously, we'd like y'all to do that as well. Uh, but the bottom line is, I sent, last Wednesday, I sent out a, um, uh, a fairly detailed email to Kevin Leonard. Uh, Mr. Leonard is the executive director of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And basically what I did is gave him a copy of Thomas's memorandum of law, explained the situation, told him what we were planning on doing, and told him what our interpretation was, is that this would not allow us to use ARPA funds. And what I wanted from him is, number one, do you agree with that analysis? And if you do, have you taken any steps to get, uh, some legislation introduced that would change that prohibition on using any monies other than, um, unrestricted general fund monies? Finally got up with Kevin Thursday afternoon after playing phone tag. Uh, he had already had his staff, uh, drafting something for me. I've also given you a copy of that, but I wanted to go over that again with you. Uh, first of all, uh, our first question was, has anyone inserted language into the House and/or Senate budget bills that overrides this prohibition on using funds other than unrestricted general fund revenue? And his reply was, uh, from his staff, is yes and no. There are steps being taken to try to get some language in there that would do that. There's, uh, several bills that are pushing in that direction. Then I said, in the alternative, has anyone gotten an attorney general's opinion that ARPA funds are considered unrestricted general fund revenue? And as y'all probably know, attorney general's opinions are not, uh, they don't have the force of law, but they are considered by the courts very seriously. And so I just wanted to see, you know, is, has, have we gotten a different interpretation from the attorney general's office that would help us? And then he said, not to my knowledge. And then to the third one, has anyone introduced any other legislation that would modify NCGS 153A 459 to specify that ARPA funds can be used for broadband grants? So there's two ways to do this. We can, we can either, uh, get some language in the budget bill, the final budget, that says, notwithstanding this section of state law, you can use ARPA funds for broadband. That's one way to do it. The second way to do it is what we're seeing here is, uh, can, has anyone introduced legislation to change that statute to where it includes, uh, state and federal grants for broadband in addition to unrestricted general fund monies? So this applies statewide. Uh, this is not just Harnett County. So this is a big issue for counties. Uh, there are several bills that, that have been introduced. And the one final thing they wanted us to know is, uh, they feel like this will likely be resolved in the budget process. And so they're hopeful of that. They also wanted us to note that NCACC always sends a memo to the legislature, uh, when they go to conference. That's where the House and the Senate, their two budget bills don't agree. So they appoint a conference committee of several key people in both houses, and they go through and come up with a proposed budget that then goes back to both houses. And so the time to rectify any issues like this is in that conference committee. And so what they have already sent is their number one bullet point for the budget reconciliation bill is this point. They, so they are on top of it. They're trying to get legislation in the budget bill that specifically overrides this prohibition. So I wanted to make you aware of that. It's a critical issue, obviously, because, uh, we all know this is a golden opportunity to get broadband throughout the county, uh, if we can get this prohibition out of the way. So that's where we're at. Uh, I wanted you to be aware of that. I wanted you to be fully aware that, um, NCACC is aware of it. They're working very hard on it and, uh, are making every effort to get it fixed. I wanted to go over that, uh, number one, so that, uh, hopefully you'd be in agreement that we start lobbying our delegation. And, uh, I intend to send them this information unless you tell me otherwise. And then I would encourage y'all also individually, um, to talk with them so they understand this is your number one priority and what it means to this county. I think they know that, but it doesn't hurt to reiterate that if we don't get this law changed, we're going to miss the golden opportunity. So, uh, that's pretty much it. The second point is, is that we have held off on talking to Cloudwise until we could go visit Fuquay Varina. And we did that because they have deployed a lot of broadband, uh, and, uh, they have been working with, uh, different vendors on that. But their situation is somewhat different. As you know, cities are very compact and you have more customers per lineal mile. Now, our problem is we have stretches where we may not have many people for a whole lineal mile if you were to do fiber, you know, fiber, uh, and so it's a different world. It also means that in trying to attract an ISP to expand into a city is much more attractive because it's, it's an easier business proposition. They get more customers, uh, at a, you know, for the price of installation. So, uh, now that we've done that, we have a meeting scheduled with our staff tomorrow, and then we plan on getting with, um, Cloudwise. It'll probably be early part of next week, and we'll move forward unless, and now that, this brings up the issue. Do you want us to hold off on that until we know they've passed this, or do you want us to go ahead and be negotiating with Cloudwise on the full, um, preliminary engineering study? So I, I need some direction from y'all, not necessarily today.
Yes, sir.
But at the next meeting, if y'all could be thinking through that and then let us know if you want us to move on with them.
Okay.
Okay.
Any, uh, any thoughts on that or any questions for Mr. Wood? Just, uh, off the top of my head, I, I was aware, I know, uh, that initial $2 million grant, I was aware that that was more or less displaced general fund money. We've been able to, uh, Ms., Ms. Honeycutt, in her, um, expertise, had been able to use COVID money for some of those things that were allowable and allow us to bank some of that general fund money. And so that was, uh, that was very, very smart and allowed us to get this jump on this initial $2 million grant. So.
Yes, sir.
Certainly appreciate that. Uh, and then, of course, the big question is, will, what's going to happen to the law as it now stands with regard to ARPA money? Uh, so I understand that. I, you know, off the top of my head, though, I, I would prefer to be ready if we have the funds available, uh, rather because, let's space it, there'll probably be 100 counties in North Carolina scrambling to do the same thing we want to do. So I, my, my initial thoughts would be anything that we could do, um, prior to, to be ready to move, seize that opportunity, if we're able to utilize this funding in that manner. Um, my, my, my thoughts would be, let's go ahead and start having those conversations with Cloudwise. Um, but that's just my opinion, and, uh, certainly we can all think about that and discuss it at a later time.
Okay.
I would have to agree. I would say time is of the essence. Uh, instead of keep on kicking the can down the road, you know, we kind of had this planned for, you know, a while, even before the ARPA funds were even, you know, being taken into consideration. So just keep on going, get it done. Be that.
You agree with that?
I do.
Mr. McCoy?
I, uh, I just think it's important that, uh, uh, our manager, acting manager, send us the information, uh, on lobbying our, uh, representatives.
Mm-hmm.
Because a lot of this depends on them. So you need to send us that information of how, what you want to say to them.
Okay. I would just refer, I would just refer to the two emails I've given you.
Okay.
Because Thomas', and Thomas's, um, memorandum of law is attached to that.
Okay.
So it lays out the case, but I think even the more pertinent thing is, um, what we got from NCACC because they're going to be getting information from NCACC on which specific bill to support. Uh, but we'll be happy to, uh, resend these if y'all want us to.
Yes, please do that. I think I heard Commissioner McCoy say she's not sure that she received those.
Okay, we'll, uh, we'll get these out either today or tomorrow.
But I think it's really important, each one of us thought that conversation with our representatives, but they, they feel a lot of that, they need to really be aware of.
Right. And I will be sending a, um, a cover letter with this, uh, I guess really a cover email. Uh, do you want it to come from me? You want it, you want me to do it for you, or how do you want to do that?
I'm fine if you go ahead and have it come from you, and then we'll do our individual conversations with our senators and representatives.
Okay, all right.
And, and you can, and you can certainly put in that, that commissioners are in agreement with your position.
Trying to get this corrected.
I believe that.
Okay. Well, I know in conversations with several of them, I think they're all in agreement, we need the broadband. I don't think anybody disagrees with that, so.
Right.
Um, I, I feel pretty confident that they're going to support it. Okay.
Sounds good. Let me back up. I did hear a couple of people say to, uh, let's just go ahead and allow Mr. Wood to have that conversation with Cloudwise. Commissioner McCoy, are you okay with that? Uh, Commissioner Wetherspoons, I heard Commissioner Nick and Commissioner Johnson say, yes, just, let's just plow on with that.
Okay.
Because you are right. I, you know, they all realize, I, we all realize now the, the need for that broadband service for our citizens. And so I would, um, you know, I obviously can't speak for them, but I'm sure they're thinking the same thing we are, that we don't need something that's going to create a road block so that we can't utilize these resources that we're going to have.
The only other thing I have, I just want to thank Thomas for his research. Uh, that's really what triggered my looking at it in more depth.
Right.
So, great job.
Thank you, Thomas. Appreciate that.
Well, we got lawyers.
Okay, uh, Mr. Wood, county manager's report.
Okay, uh, just briefly, uh, we plan on having a proclamation and recognition for our Gold Star families. That'll be on September 20th. Uh, I don't want to say too much more about it because I don't want to steal the thunder from that day. But, uh, I believe Chris will have something ready for you then. The only other thing, Sand Hill Center Quarterly Fiscal Report, we've sent, sent that to you in your packet. Uh, that's our mental health thing. Uh, we do need to do the meeting agenda review, uh, and some applications, I think you have for boards and commissions. Um, and then we do need a closed session on two items.
Okay. I, I have one thing. Uh, could you please give us a, a rundown on the, uh, on what you found out from the sheriff in regards to the in-car cameras?
Yes, and he apologizes, he was going to be here today, but he had to go to a meeting with the SBI at 10 o'clock this morning on something. Uh, what we have, where he, um, is on it is, we have 50 patrol cars that, uh, we would put the cameras in. So that's one for every one of our patrol cars. He's also gotten a grant for four more for free. Uh, he will be putting in the purchase order next week. He has been trying to nail down with them a delivery date, but as y'all know, the logistics on just about every product today is up in the air. So we have not gotten a delivery date, but, um, we will be ordering them next week, and he has gotten the grant. So, does anybody have any questions on that? Okay.
Uh, thank you for that update. Okay. Excuse me. Uh, sorry, thought I heard somebody. Okay, looking at the, uh, agenda for next week then, uh, of course, have the consent agenda, um, and then I think we had, uh, was it one appointment I saw or?
Two.
Two.
We got three.
Okay. Yeah, we have a reappointment, uh, two reappointments and then a, a new appointment, I believe. Okay, any, any issue with any of those commissioners? Okay. Um, the number seven, eight, anything on those, Mr. Wood? They look to me to just be, uh...
This, this is really critical. We have to have, I mean, uh, Med Trans is the, um, medical helicopter.
Right.
So we want to get that renewed.
Is that, aren't they there now? Is this a renewal of their lease?
Yeah, they're there.
Renewal of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then on eight, uh, this is just to, um, put in a new solid waste convenience site in the northwest, uh, part of the county.
Okay. Uh, and then, um...
Then y'all, on number nine, you sent, um, you sent the recommendation from the Economic Development Council back to them to reconsider.
Right.
I think initially they had said a representative of the Board of Education. You indicated that you would like to go ahead and have that named as, uh, the superintendent of education would be the designee. And so they are in agreement with you on that. So we have, uh, scheduled that on your board, uh, meeting. That's something that you probably could do, um, under consent if you want to.
Yes, let's...
I would move that to the consent.
Just do that, let's move that, unless anybody has any disagreement with that, let's put that on the consent agenda.
Yeah, because they've done what you've asked.
Exactly. Uh, then, uh, number 10 would be the, uh, property exchange that we talked about this morning, is that would be the motion to formally approve that.
Right. And then number 11, we need to take off because I think what you said was you want to put that on the next work session and give y'all two weeks to think through it.
Yes, sir.
And also for Brian to get you additional information.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there any objection to putting item 10 under consent agenda? Let's put item 10 under consent agenda as well.
Okay.
Is that okay, Dwight?
The only thing that could mess it up...
The only thing that could mess it up, and we don't know, of course, Board of Education approved it this morning, but the county of Wellington had seen the base agreement that we had made some tweaks yesterday, and they, I don't know what they're responsible doing. Well, the fastest one was sent to them, so if they come back and ask some other points, it might not be profitable.
Right.
Let's put it into consent agenda.
If there's a problem.
Take it back out.
Yeah, you can remove it.
Request to pull it out.
Yeah.
Yep.
And we'll let you know.
Yeah, just let us know if there's a need to pull it.
Yeah, I think their managers asked for a couple of things that we didn't agree with. So.
All right, very good. So Melissa, we good with the agenda for next week? Okay, how about any new business to come before today? All right, here none, I believe we have need to go to closed session.
Right.
So I'm moving to let the board go into closed session for the following purposes. One, to instruct the county staff concerning the position to be taken by the county in negotiating a contract with the acquisition of real property. And two, to discuss certain personnel matters. Motion is made pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143, 318.11A, five and six.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, we'll go into closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, meeting is adjourned. Thank you folks for your hard work today. Hard work in preparation of today.